Morning, it is 10:00 AM on October 25, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. You can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one, we will close public comment number one and move to agency reports. Good morning, Brett.
Good morning, Brett.
All right. Well, just wanted to touch on the, on the report a little bit, and I had three other things to, just to mention. So 187 veterans and surviving spouses that we've seen during the quarter. And something we haven't seen in, in several years is assistance in rent utilities and funeral assistance. Based because we, we changed the guidelines, the income guidelines really helped. So I want to thank you for approving that. So rent assistance, $1,100. And we had one veteran come in for utility assistance, $237.23. And one family for funeral assistance, $2,033 for grand total of $3,370.23. And then on the report, it shows a breakdown, 187 men and women, World War II, clear down to surviving spouses. And on the backside, there's five hometown outreaches that was done during the quarter. Story City, Slater, Colo, Zerion, and Maxwell. And I'm back at Slater tomorrow at the log cabin from 10 until 5:00 PM. To mention that. And also I have flyers that I brought with me that are on the table for the supermarket, our annual supermarket. This will be number 19 or 20, I think I've lost count, November 18th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Plex in Ames. Veterans and spouses are invited to that. We're going to have a lot of other VA agencies there to include our famous haircuts. We have three ladies that will be cutting hair for veterans, so. And then the other thing to mention is we are enrolling veterans to go on the May 10 Freedom Flight. And that is anybody that served between the first day of World War II and the last day of Vietnam. Or if you were in the guard or reserves during that time and did 20 years, you're now eligible. So they can stop by our office and we can enroll them.
That's for.
Get them on that flight.
Next May?
May, yep, May 10th. Yep, we, when we've teamed up with Brushy Creek and 29 other counties. To make this all happen. We can't, we just can't fill an airplane anymore, you know? We did four in a row doing that, so. Last August, we had 12 that went. So maybe we might, I think we have 15 right now.
Right.
They're slated to go May 10th, so we'll see if we can grow that number a little bit. And yeah, if anybody, if you, if veterans in that group that have never been out there, been on one of these flights. I mean, it's like a, it's like a trip of a lifetime. So, yep. So that kind of concludes my report. Any questions from the board on anything?
I don't have any questions. I just think you, the outreach that you do, I know that's been very beneficial to the veterans that you're able to go to the local communities and help them get connected to services they need. So appreciate that additional outreach that you're doing.
Thank, thank you. And I, and really I appreciate able to go out and do that too, get out in the communities, the veterans out there. And those that aren't veterans, I can always direct them to other services the county has, so.
Yep.
All right.
I can't do it any better to go out and make those connections. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Now we have consideration of minutes.
I move approval of the October 10 minutes as presented.
Or 18th, excuse me.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
If consideration of claims next.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I move approval of all items on consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public hearing items. We have second consideration of ordinance 306 amending Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions and Chapter 86, District Requirements of the Story County Code of Ordinances and Development Regulations.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is one we heard last time. We've gotten any new comments on it. So typically in that instance, we recommend waiver of third hearing and approval on second. Questions?
You said no comments. Okay. All right. I, I do not have any questions. Any questions on that? We will.
Ready for a motion.
Open public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, that's right again.
Anyone who wishes to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one step forward to make.
And this is the one I'm. Of the setbacks for.
Right, right.
Just, there's two ordinances, just to clarify for anybody.
Yes, yes.
Right. We'll close public, the public hearing. Anything further? Do I have a motion?
I move that the supervisors approve ordinance 306 amending Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions and Chapter 86, district requirements of the Story County Code of Ordinances, land development regulations to establish setback requirements for hazardous materials, pipelines on second consideration and waive third consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
All right.
Basil.
Aye.
Now we have second consideration of ordinance 307 amending Chapter 90, conditional uses of Story County Land Development Regulations.
And again, this one was heard last time. It's on making a provision to allow adaptive reuse of historic structures, no additional comments. So we'd recommend waiver of third and approval on second.
Any questions? Are we open?
I don't have any additional question.
Okay. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make a comment? Can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval of ordinance 307 amending Chapter 19, conditional uses for adaptive reuse on second consideration and waive third consideration.
Chapter 90.
I think I said Chapter 90, didn't I?
I thought it was 19.
90.
Okay.
I'm going to change that to 90.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
Moving on to additional items, we have consideration of a request from Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development for $50,000 for Colo Childcare Project Partnership. Hello.
Hello, supervisor.
Greg, can you? Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I was looking.
That's okay.
Uh, yeah, so we figured, you know, you guys would miss us, so we. But no, in our report, our quarterly report, we did discuss that we were working on the Colo NESCO childcare. And so we just wanted to bring that to you. And just give you some more information and also ask for support, uh, support and funding on that. So this is just kind of the research that we've done. So a lot of this has, you know, been going on, you know, prior to COVID, post-COVID. But you really see, you know, that there is the childcare desert in the Colo NESCO school district. So there's the school district map up there. Also another map that you find on the DHS website, the orange dots are the deserts where there, you know, is lacking. Blue dots mean that there's sufficient childcare. In Story County, you, most of the blue dots are kind of in the Ames area. And anything outside of that really is a desert. And then you can also see in that future ready Iowa, where some of the awards already have been awarded, which has kind of been on the other side of the county and also in the central part of the county. But the east side, you know, where there is a desert, there's really not a whole lot going on there. You, next slide, please. Um, so just some other research. So we work with a lot of different companies, Gladys CCR and R, Iowa Women's Foundation. And so these are just some, um, you know, actual data. You know, research, research shows that the parents and guardians miss an average of 4.3 days of work due to childcare. $4.4 billion lost annually in our businesses. 65% of the parents and guardians are late to work or leave work early because of childcare. 63% of the parents and guardians say that childcare influences their careers. And 85% of the parents and guardians wish their employer offered childcare benefits. And this is from the Iowa Women's Foundation research that they have done. So, you know, I think we all know that it's definitely been a huge issue with our workforce in our communities. But just kind of wanted to show the numbers in regards to that. Next slide. So steps that we have taken, so we kind of gave you a high level of what we've done. So been talking with the superintendent out at Colo NESCO. And we had tried to get information and pull everything together for the first round of the governor's grant, which was a very quick turnaround time. And we just did not have enough time. We had kind of been in talks. But, you know, then they're also trying to get ready for school. That. So we've been, you know, we continued talking and then the second round came out. And so we really got really heavy into it and really got some meetings set up. And we've had a lot of good meetings. We've got a task force and within the task force, we've got businesses. Greg and myself from the chamber, the school district, there's teachers, there's school board members. There's people just in the community, parents, the city, CCR and R, Iowa Women's Foundation. So the task force is definitely a very wide range to make sure that we're really taking care of what the parents needs, what the community needs. You know, and just kind of those resources to pull in everything. So the conversations with the businesses, um, the funding for that, obviously with the grant for the governor's grant, it would be actually purchasing childcare slots. So we've got a few businesses that we're talking to them directly in regards to that because their employees live in the school district. And so their students would actually be using this. And the ones that we have kind of talked to as far as parents and then reaching out to the employers, these students are kindergartners, so they're going to use it for several years yet. And we're looking at more of a before and after school care and then summer. And then there are other businesses that we've talked to in regards to loans or grants to just help us kind of get it started. Because there's a lot of other things that go into it instead of just the childcare slots. We are also planning to put in an application for the second round of the governor's grant. And so that's why we've had a lot of different meetings at the task forces, so we can get everything together. We've also done a lot of the DHS requirements. So the space at Colo NESCO, there's two rooms. So like the fire marshal and things like that, they've already been out there because otherwise the school wouldn't be open. But we've ran through a lot of other things, like the shelving needs to be lower. It needs to not, you know, be really tall and be able to, you know, fall on the children if they decide to climb on it and things like that. We actually had CCR and R come out and we walked through all the spaces, talked about, you know, all the little things that we, you know, would really need to make the space. Cause right now they're using it for classrooms, but they can move those classrooms. And how we utilize that space, the space then has its own separate door. We'd want to make sure that there was, excuse me, separate security for that door. And also you have to make sure that you have software to log in so that you know where the children are, who picked them up and things like that. And then that actually goes right out to the playground as well. So, you know, you're not having to walk to the other side of the school. It's all just really right there. It's, it's really an ideal space. So, yeah, so we've talked about a lot of those requirements and the things that we would have to do to get that going. The teacher, the family consumer science teacher is also helping with. Her students are getting a list of things that you need, kind of in the, you know, the, the board games and, you know, the activities and, you know, the different balls and then the carts for those. So, you know, there's a lot of people just kind of really pulling some resources and things like that. Shocking, you are not allowed to have jump ropes anymore. I was very disappointed. It's a strangling hazard. I was like, how do you not have jump ropes? But there's no more jump ropes. So that was, you know, kind of interesting to find out when I was going through it. So, yeah, so those are kind of all of the things and steps that we've got going. We do have another task force meeting this Thursday to pull everybody else in and just kind of, you know, finish up some more things. And just kind of talk about, you know, that application and, you know, the things that are needed. Yeah, so next slide. So I've kind of talked, you know, over these things. So on the right side, you can see kind of just a short list of things. You know, the security doors, the, you know, smaller tables and chairs, software, the blinds that you actually push up so that you don't have strings, so that the kids can't do anything with that string. You know, just all of those little things, the training for the employees, you know, the CPR, the mandatory reporter. IQ 4K, which is the old QRS rating, it's now changed to the IQ 4K. Cubbies, lockers, you know, all of those little things. And so, you know, we've got several different businesses. We've got the grant that we're applying for. And then we've also, so YSS was planning to start a kids' club out there. COVID hit, there's a lot of things going on. So we've been back in conversation with them that if we can kind of help them get the space ready. The superintendent also has some ideas on who the director and everything can be. Um, so if we can kind of pull all of that together, if YSS can kind of be that childcare heartbeat, I guess, of it, since, you know, they kind of know how to do this a little bit better than the rest of us with their other childcare centers or kids' clubs that they have throughout the county as well. So, so, yeah, so those are kind of all of the funding avenues that we have at this point.
So YSS would provide the fun, uh, provide the personnel for the childcare part as well as kids' club? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So this would be like the kids' club in Colo. Because they were going to, they never actually got it set up.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we've asked them to kind of come back and, you know, they had a lot of difficulties. And so we're trying to help them with all the barriers that they had. And so that they can come back and do that.
So will the employer of record be YSS or will it be the school?
It would be YSS is what we're hoping.
What we're hoping. Our backup is to have YSS as the primary. But if that should fall through for whatever reason, the school district has also offered to help with the staffing and be the employment of record.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so this was a budget that I, you know, kind of put together. Obviously, we do have a lot of things in place, but there's also a lot of things that, you know, we're still working through with the task force and everything. This is just kind of showing, you know, all of the different items that kind of go into it. And so we will be, you know, putting in the childcare grant. The only thing I don't have listed is all of the funding from the businesses as well. It would have made it a lot smaller to see because there's a lot of different businesses. But, so I just wanted to kind of note that, that, you know, it's not just the grant and the ask for the supervisors. There's several other that would, you know, employers and businesses that are actually going to go into this budget and help get this off the ground and continue it. The one thing that we've talked about the most is making sure that it's sustainable.
So the 150 does not include the personnel cost for the actual childcare workers.
Correct.
So that's to be determined. This isn't a complete budget at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the 50,000 that you're asking from Story County, that is to, so that you can apply for the grant? And how did you land on 50,000?
So how we landed on 50,000 was this, is this matrix on the scoring for this, uh, what we're calling the 2.0 grants is based on partnership and also local contribution levels. Honestly, I use the Slater model as the starting point for the 50,000. We are targeting 60 slots of childcare for this program. We reached out to several businesses, like Nikki said, uh, we've reached out to Emerson and Marshalltown. John Hall used to work in the Ames Chambers. Now the president over there, he connected me to their HR person about funding slots because they have employees in our area that commute to Marshalltown. Casey's, Align Energy, Burke, Verbio, I mean, the list goes on. So we are, we are reaching out to employers for these slots as well. The reason we target 50,000 is because it helps with the overall launch. It, it's a matching grant. And we're asking you to pledge the money. We don't know until within 30 days of November 16th if we're going to receive the grant. So that right now is if we are hoping to have that total response from the governor's future ready program, we are hoping for the full amount to be allocated and then start the process of finalizing all our details up until fall of '23 when we launch the program.
So are you just asking for the funds for the match? And then if, what happens if you don't get the grant? Are you saying you don't want the money from the county? I'm just unclear by what you're.
This program that we are devising only is feasible if we get the grant. In this case, now we will go back to the drawing board. The task force is
Right.
is dead set. We need this in the Colo area. The mapping shows that, the, the childcare centers show that. But we're only asking for a match for this grant. If the grant is not approved, I cannot guarantee we won't be back asking for another match grant, but that, that would go away if the grant wasn't approved in this case.
After your meeting on Thursday, we have a more complete budget. Because this doesn't show a lot of things. This is just kind of a and, and I'm a little, and I'd like to see that what the full budget is and what all the anticipated revenues are.
Yeah, this is where it gets kind of with the catch 22 on the governor's future ready 2.0 program. They, they allocated the funding for this program with the concept of what they call a term of revitalization. The, the first round of grants was designed to brick, brick and mortar build. They wanted new childcare centers. Sauerdanthos programs is a good case of that. That was allocated the first round. This round was allocating rural areas to revitalize underused facilities, in this case Colo NESCO. They, they don't want full budgets finalized, approved, set and locked in. They want concepts and they want to approve funding to the general area. So we won't know those final numbers honestly until fall of '23 if the money's allocated. While I say fall, I say summer of '23 because we won't know until this, we, we asked for 60 slots, they approved 60 slots, we only have 37 kids. I mean, it's all going to be dictated up until that moment when we have the slots filled of how much our final budget is.
But you said, when we talked the other day, you said the city of Colo has a council meeting.
Next month.
Next month. So before your grant application is due. So you will know more about that. You will know more about the businesses, about all the revenues. And I assume they're ongoing, not just the first year.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed, I must heard you. I thought you were asking for the finalized budget of expenses and allocations and everything, on staffing, director salaries, all that stuff. We, we have concepts and proposals, but we won't have final numbers until the summer of next year.
Okay, but.
And when does this matching grant do?
November 16th.
Okay, so let's do November 16th.
Yeah.
It was actually a October.
It, yeah, it was October something and they did move it back a month. So thank goodness.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work that goes into getting businesses to partner. So.
So I'm, I guess I was, I'm a little confused because I thought it was going to be through the school, but now it sounds like it will be through YSS.
We're trying to. Yes. And I think it's a good partner because they have something they've done and that they're good at. So we are definitely trying to bring them out as a partner as well. And I think it would help actually sustain because of all the different, I mean, there's the DHS requirements are just, it's crazy to think about. And so if you have someone who knows those and has, you know, shown quality work, it'll be, it'll be a good help for the school district to have.
So it would be like the school district is subcontracting with YSS to run.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
As the primary, the backup of our plan, talking to superintendent, is they would hire a director and staff it and launch it as well if the grant was approved. The thing about this is, uh, the, the property we're targeting, the rooms that Nikki's already talked about, we've already done the walkthroughs and she's done the walkthroughs as well. They have the classrooms, the bathroom facilities, the, the security systems in the school. The school just got done with a multimillion dollar renovation as well.
Right.
They are all in on this. And at this point with this task force, it's, the momentum is incredible. And, and everyone's really excited, especially with the housing development proposal that's going to be launched in Colo here shortly in the next month. There's a lot of public support behind this as well.
Will there be preschool slots too? Or is it just?
So it'll go PK to five.
PK to five.
Yep. But, I mean, we also want to make sure because there is a center up in McCallsburg, so we're not trying to take away from that. We're just trying to add to the school district because it is a very
Right.
big school district. But yes, so we're targeting the PK through 12. It'll start at 6:00 AM till school starts. It'll go then from when school gets out till 6:00 PM. And then in the summer months, there'll be summer hours, obviously.
P, PK to 12 or PK?
Or, sorry, PK to five.
That's, that's what I thought you said.
You know, there's some seniors that probably need it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, it is, so what you're looking at here is 50,000 from the county plus 150 from the future ready grant for a total of 200,000, correct? Plus whatever the, whatever the personnel costs will be. And then will you have some kind of budget that shows what revenues will go to cover the personnel costs since the grant is not? Or are you assuming that that will just be all the, you know, what the parents are charged, that that will cover the personnel costs?
So the, the parents will, the parents will be charged. But then there also will be the childcare slots purchased from the businesses as well. Plus we also have businesses helping fund us and get us started, you know, and things like that. So we've got a lot of different ways that we're trying to kind of do the salary portion of that.
And this is a one-time ask, not a recurring ask to the board of supervisors, correct? Cause these look like all one-time kind of things.
Correct.
Correct. The thing with the slots too is how we're structuring this is strictly to operations because the school district is already occurring the cost for the building itself. So once we launch this, the security and everything else is maintained by the, by the school district. That will be included in the parental fees. We're trying to keep those as low as possible. Scholarship for families. So that is an endowment. Hopefully we're going to start growing as well for, you know, employers that want to sponsor it. They sponsor it for the, for the start. And then you're saying, listen, would you like to do an endowment? And start contributing to that as well, because every, every employer in this area is looking for childcare and option for workforce. So they can look at that as an additional recruiting tool.
Right. I don't have any additional questions.
I do not either.
No, I think, I think that does it for now. I, I would like to see a more complete budget, but I know you're not there yet. You'll be there in a couple of weeks, I assume, much closer.
We'll be closer on the overall. But again, I'll be totally upfront. We won't have a finalized formal budget with staffing costs and, and total expenses until just summer of next year, if we were allowed to grant. Because we won't have those to submit to the state until we have that stuff figured out for the start of the school year.
Right. But right now you just need to get that grant application turned in.
Correct. And the turnaround time is within 30 days. They had to, within 30 days, the first go around. So we were looking by early December, mid-December latest for a response from the state, so we can start working on those numbers.
All right. Ready for a motion if anyone would like to. Ready for a motion if anyone would like to make one? Sure, I'll make the motion that we approve fifty thousand dollars for a Colo childcare project. From, do we want it from the? ARPA?
General revenue.
General revenue?
Yep, it's. Our priority.
I think, I think it does as well.
And should we say it's a one time?
Sure, it's a one, one time.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hi, Merkin.
Hi.
Acel, hi. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to hearing.
I'm sorry.
How things are going.
Thank you very much for the support. We have a meeting on Thursday. Again, to back up what Nikki already offered, by all means, please come to that meeting in the task force. This is going to be fantastic news for that as an announcement. And we hope to have some private employers contributions lock in by end of the week as well. So.
Could you send us details on that?
What's that?
Could you send details on the meeting?
Yeah, I'll send an email to the.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Moving to departmental reports, we have animal controls quarterly report. And if you could turn the microphone back on, that would be great. Whichever microphone you sit at.
It looks like one of them is sleeping.
Oh, no. I wish the camera was working. Camera was working.
Good morning, board.
Good morning. Oh, you get, you get, turn down the mic. Yeah, your microphone.
Right in front of you. Yep.
There you go.
Okay, good morning, board. I just wanted to go over a few highlights today from my report. Last quarter, we took in a total of a hundred and six cats and kittens and thirty dogs. Ninety-six animals were adopted. And fourteen were returned to their owners. The, we had, there was a Chase and Tales Memorial Fund Run fundraiser. And they raised four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the shelter. And this will go towards extra medical care enrichment and neonatal care for kittens. And then we are seeing an increase in adoptions compared to the previous quarter. And hope to keep the momentum going. And this will help free up staff to continue staff development as well as team building, which I'm, I'm planning on implementing quarterly. And then last but not least, I did bring some foster kittens to show. It's just an example of. We have to take these guys home with us. And make sure that they eat then. I've had them for about two weeks and. It's just a, a need we have for foster homes.
So how old are they and what are their names?
They're almost five weeks old and we guess, but just based on their teeth and their ears and eyes, they're about five weeks. I've had them for about two weeks now and their names are Betty Spaghetti and Noodle. Any other questions?
No, they're awfully cute and I sure hope somebody. Adopts them and gives them their forever home.
Yeah.
I just sent him, I just sent a picture home. We'll see what I get as a reaction. I think I know.
That's what happens when they, when they bring.
I know.
They bring, bring animals for show and tell. You might get a cat and I went home with a puppy, so you know.
I almost took the ones home we saw the other day when we were over at the animal shelter, but I, I resisted then and. These guys are cute.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. We'll see, we'll see. I'll let you know.
Okay.
And keep up the good work on social media.
Yeah.
Everything I. I know you're working really closely with Bryce and just keep pushing that information out because it, I see it all the time. It's great. You're doing a great job.
Your social media is great. It's hilarious. I loved your, your kind of take on Jake from State Farm. That was just hilarious.
Yeah, you can find like a red polo.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to other reports, we have discussion and direction on revised amounts and timeline for provider agreement with City of Nevada for the Nevada newsletter presentation or publication.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Too many things. It's actually hard to believe it's already been nearly a year that we started a partnership. With the city of Nevada. And we also do it with the city of Gilbert as well, but the city of Nevada is a, a larger publication. We're in partnership with the, the city, the school district. Story County Hospital, Nevada Main Street and Nevada Economic Development. And we provide a monthly newsletter. It goes out to all the households within the five zero two zero one zip code, which is Nevada zip code. So we. Feel like this is breaking up again. We met a couple of weeks ago to just discuss the, kind of look back at the first year and see how it, how it went. And based on some of the numbers that Joe Wakeman with the Nevada School District put together. The contributions need to be increased from the part of Story County. And that's why I'm here today to request that the board consider increasing from two thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred. And actually switching to fiscal year. Rather than a calendar year basis. I think when we discussed that at our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago, that all made sense. We all operate on fiscal year rather than calendar year basis. I think that we've all heard some very positive comments for this first year. It's been really interesting to find different ways to put information out and, and get pictures and. Just, it's been a, a good partnership, I think. So it's on other reports today, just as some, for some direction. And then I, based on today, I will follow up with the contract. On November eighth. And I might talk to the city of Gilbert as well and see about switching them to fiscal years too. I think that makes sense. And I think we'll keep that contribution the same. Are there any questions?
That's, I, you know, I think it's a good magazine that they put out, a lot of good information. I think it's been a good investment for Story County to be a part of it, just another avenue to get information. To get information out.
And I will note, we've, we've surpassed our page limit several times. And that's just because we've had additional information and they've had some flexibility and allowed us to. Share that information. And I, I think it's not a very. It's not a very rigid. Document. We all in the, we are all in this together and that's reflected in the quality of the publication.
I think it's very good. My one concern has been that we can't get things in necessarily to notify of. Upcoming events because it takes so long between the submission. And when it's published and that, I wish that could be a shorter timeframe.
And I think we all, that's definitely Story County's concern. I hear that from the other entities as well. But the lead time to get this to the publisher and then get mailed out to households, we are, we're right now getting. I put an email out last week to get information for the December newsletter already and November newsletters will hit people's mailboxes this. What, this week? We, yeah.
So we just need to think a little more ahead of time on something. Getting used to doing that, I think that would be good. Yeah. No, I agree. I think it's, I think it's worthwhile and your numbers, I looked over your numbers. I didn't do the math, but I see you basically did it in terms of. How many pages each, each source had got on it, so I'm fine with the numbers.
I, I think it's worth noting too that. That Nevada is being contacted by other communities. And using this partnership because it's so unique as an example. To try and get information out in their own communities. I, I think it's an incredibly creative. Way to address our, our news vacuum that we. Right now and other communities are noticing.
And that's basically what it came out of was a conversation. In fact, it was out of the community gardens when they're dedicating it last year. There was a conversation about, we're just not getting the. How can we get our local news out more? And I think that, that was kind of the, you know, the kernel of what started it. So. It's a good thing.
Yeah. I think, I think it's a really good partnership. I appreciate. All of your work, both you and Bryce, getting things. Gathering information and making sure it's getting there on time, because I know that's a lot of work to.
That is a challenging part sometimes. Especially given one page sometime too, and we have a lot more to share.
Right. So you're just needing direction right now?
Yep. And coming forward with the contract for twenty-five hundred and switching from a calendar year to fiscal year. And again, like I said, that will be on the. November, I think I said October eighth, but November eighth consent agenda, the contract will be. I've already sent it through Ethan and he's looked it over.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your work on this.
Moving to the ARPA quarterly report.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome back. Like I should leave and come back and put a different hat on.
Oh, we need to have a little basket of hats.
Yeah, so this is the first official quarterly report that I will, I am presenting to the board of supervisors. This is not necessarily the report that Lisa Markley files with the United States Treasury. That's something, they, they work hand in hand, but as the board knows, for all the sub, majority of the sub recipients of ARPA funds. They had additional performance measures. That were outlined in the agreements and that is what this quarterly report will try to capture in addition to updates on the projects. That Lisa reports on. This is the thinnest one you will see. Because of the time that this was. Completed and prepared, we're up to the quarter that ended September thirtieth. And as you well know, majority of the agreements are just being, or were finalized in September and we had two more today. And I think I have a few more to come at you on October eighth. So every. Why do I keep on saying October eighth, November eighth? Thank you. So this, this is the type of document you'll be seeing then at the end of each quarter that we file the report with the US Treasury. All the sub recipients have a very quick turnaround time to get me the reports. If at any time I do not get. A timely report. From the sub recipients, I will make sure the board knows that. That will be a cause for concern for me. Because we do not have a lot of time to report back out to the US Treasury. And so I will make sure to keep the board aware of that. Just some highlights on this report. Page two. Yeah, page one. I do want to note that project number two, project uplift from the city of Nevada has been withdrawn. So that funding will enter back into the amount. If, as you go through, you see when I have a line for performance measures and it says nothing to report. Again, they either had not completed the, the agreement in the timeframe. Nor did I ask them, maybe they had completed the agreement. I, I just knew they had done enough, taken no action because of the timing of that agreement. So I didn't even really ask them to report anything. Like I said. And the next one you see will not be this simple. It'll be appearance like this, but a lot of the boxes will be checked and additional information. This quarter, we did have the Workforce Development Initiative. Report as well as the city of Collins Food Relief Program. So that is on, the first one is the food, city of Collins Food Relief Program, and that's on page four. It's sub recipient number seven. So they received fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and to date, I have submitted claims for just under nine thousand dollars. If you look at the report that Lisa Markley filed, however, you'll see that. It was only one thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty, or thirty-six cents on that report because of the timing on our claims. I received it before the end of the quarter, but I hadn't turned in to, we hadn't paid it out. So we're going from the date paid out during a quarter to report. And that's really how I approach this. Since I developed this, a lot of the agreements have been now finalized through the board. And so you'll see either pending approval or I've not received anything. We still have a couple jurisdictions that have not finalized their SAM.gov. Registration that has been very. Difficult at best is the way I could describe it. I know one community in particular is extremely frustrated. So I'm going to reach out to. Feenstra's office again and see if there's something that can be done because these two jurisdictions have repeated, have repeatedly. Filed the same information with SAM.gov. And that is nonsensical. And I have their signed contracts in my office, so I am just waiting for that next step. For them to. Bring them, for me to bring them forward. The last part will always be. A summary on general updates because beyond just the keeping track and monitoring and risk assessment of all the sub recipients. There is a lot of behind the scene work that I have to do. So you'll see in this section. What else I've been doing. So for example, as the board knows, I, I did ask for. Some monies to be allocated for a software solution. I have since kind of turned my viewpoint on that a little bit, given the amount. The costliness of those and we'll address it in-house. We can do that. I think I said our work session YouTube is beautiful because it will help me design a lot of stuff as I watch videos. We've been, I've been developing standard operating procedures and I have a couple more yet to go. Those are just to really. Formalize how we're doing so that if we get audited or if, as the state auditor's office, now if, when the state auditor's office comes in, I can show this is. The process we've been following. Update on the website, it's continually going on and hopefully in the next three to four weeks, a lot of things will change on the ARPA page too. And then just beginning to the, get ready for the next quarterly report, which will be here before I know it. I have the. Except for the agreements approved in the last three weeks, all the sub recipients have received. Their monitoring schedules for the next, well, through twenty-two-six. So they know what dates to expect me to be on site. And so those are in my calendar as well and I'm life scheduled out for the next. Four years apparently. But if there's anything you would like to see in this that I deny include, please let me know and I can add that in very easy or. If there's something about layout that you'd like modified, I was trying to keep it simple and way that I conclude the most information. And then as always, I do have all the reports that they submit to me as well.
You know, Leanne, I like it. I like how you have it set out and the fact that we don't know. What the state auditors necessarily are going to want. I think this really lays it out kind of clearly with checkboxes of, you know, do they have SAM.gov? How much were they awarded? How much have they expended? Yes, they may want something additional, but it's a read at a glance.
Yeah. I thank you for all your work on organizing this. It's a lot of data, you know, just from the beginning. You know, with all the grant applications and all of that, I'm just confident that our records are being in good shape on this. So I'm, I appreciate it and I appreciate you. Tolerating this.
Thank you. Tolerating, yes.
No, you're.
You, you, you're, you'd like to organize things. You do a great job of that. I know it wasn't your first choice of. Whatever, but, but your talents are, are very, well.
I'm getting to, thank you. I'm getting to know a lot of people and agencies throughout Story County that I've always. Been on the periphery of their services, wearing different hats in the community and, and so forming these relationships, I think is. Can be really beneficial to and allow me to spread some of our messages. In a manner that I had not before.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay, and there's no action on this? It's just a quarterly. You'll see me again.
Thanks, Leanne.
Thanks, Leanne.
Any upcoming agenda items?
I do not.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action. On the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one will close public comment.
Seeing no one will close public comment number two and move to the late on Simon's committee meeting update and announcements. Rose Merkin?
Thursday, Story County Economic Development Group in Story City in the morning. Afternoon, have some work on the watershed management authorities and getting ready for our open house November 10th. Wednesday and Friday look pretty open right now and Monday's Halloween.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just in case anybody needed to remind. My favorite holiday.
I have a joint AEDC board meeting tomorrow afternoon. Thursday, I also have a herd of board meetings in the Story County Economic Development and then CICS board meeting. So it's a
busy day.
Busy day on Thursday.
I have Nevada Economic Development tomorrow morning and then I am going to be, I have some Zoom meetings tomorrow, but I'm going to be out of town. My stepdaughter's wedding for the next three days in Wisconsin. So I will see y'all on Monday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. There is no meeting on next Tuesday. We have the symposium on creating inclusive organizations next Tuesday. So there'll be no meeting next Tuesday. Other than that, that was, thank you for that reminder, Shelley. That would be it. Anything further?
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd move it going to closed session for two, pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5 Sub 1 to evaluate professional competency of an individual whose appointment hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that person's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Second.
Then seconded, Merkin.
I.
Edens.
I.
Basil, I will now go into closed session.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded, Edens.
I.
Merkin. Basil, I, we are adjourned.